Has everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Did it change?
There's not just two items.
No.
The warrant and the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Is there warrant, this warrant that we just signed?
Yes.
Okay. And yes, because it wasn't in the folder when I went there.
Warrant number forty-five.
Do we need more stuff to sign or did it go already?
It went over. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay. So are there any updates needed or any more discussion? All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Next section is the visitor comments. Did anybody sign in to comment? So Stephanie, did you want to talk?
All right. Should have slid in first. Okay. All right. Who's going to read this because it's easier and it gathers? Oh, sorry. Stephanie parent. Just two fifty-seven, not two three. Just to recap, I just wanted to reiterate the status of this whole situation. Just that the building is not at student capacity, but rather out of classroom space. I feel a large part is due to the building not being moved as it was designed. Going back to the original building plans, there was only one preschool classroom. Given that fact that we operate with two preschool classrooms, that on guy can short us one room. The additional social emotional learning spaces are also terrific if we have the space allowed for it. I feel that we should prioritize grades pre-K through six learning spaces before adding additional programming that we don't have classroom space for at this time. I'd also like to request one city had the common room be reconsidered for usable space. In the first round of focus groups, I intended a resident architect made a suggestion to have that space reviewed by a third-party architect to see if there was any way we can repurpose that space. An architect did come in, however, it was the same architect that had built the space originally, who of course is taking off for his design, which that person at that focus group had specifically requested that third party to have a fresh eye. Also, just a suggestion, but being that the concrete ramp is in that space where the bikes are stored, I wasn't sure if that was a possibility, to look into putting the ABM into that room, which I actually think is larger than the fifth grade classroom that they're in now. I appreciate the focus groups that were recently held regarding the sixth grade. I do wish that there were some more conversations about the other options such as the do nothing, how people would have felt at that time. Administration that would ban EMGIA about moving the sixth grade and heard their opinions. I still don't feel like all options have been laid out equally. It appears that sixth grade moving to the high school has been and continues to be the primary focus option. If we do nothing, is it possible to have the two smallest grades in the school have the two classrooms rather than just assigning grades five and six the two classrooms? It wouldn't be ideal to have a yearly switch, but it would keep classrooms from being too large. I looked into Meltred Town schools for many of our residents' school choice, and most of their classes are in fact over twenty-five students per class. If we do move to a six-eight model, my other question is about recess. I know there was a huge number related to a preschool playground and that it wouldn't have been feasible, but would we be considering a middle school playground such as Michael E. Smith Middle School in South Hadley? Students at that middle school have two recesses and still play on playground structures. I know it's a lot out there, but hopefully we can spark some new classes conversation moving forward. Thank all of you guys for continuing to dig your feet into this topic for months.
Thank you. Then there's a question.
Linda, Linda. Linda, Linda and Wendy.
I just had the question about the sixth grade moving over there. What's the cost to that? Considering the classrooms are already there, there shouldn't be any cost. Everybody, are the answer in all?
So I think, incorrect if I'm wrong, didn't we have some of that laid out in the initial thing that you put out? I don't remember what the numbers were off the top of my head, but.
So full cost when we do the detail will present on February eleventh.
Okay. So I know there was some initial things that you had talked about, but there were some things that were still up near depending on specific things that happened to that.
Linda, you were asking about sixth grade move cost.
Sixth grade, because we already have the three classrooms there already, so there shouldn't be any cost. More than a case of cost.
Well, I think that's one of the things that's being addressed when they're putting the whole plan together. And then Kim?
Kim Bolt Smith, two thousand nine Miller Street. I didn't speak at the last meeting because the agenda wasn't posted at the town hall. That's what I was trying to say in the beginning. I went there, Kathy Kelly Regan even tried calling over for it. I guess somebody was out sick and eventually it did get posted, but that's why I didn't speak in the beginning because I didn't even know what was on the agenda when I got here. I just wanted to say that the presentation in regards to the focus group that you guys were given last week was not what I witnessed when I was there. I went to the first focus group Monday morning and I was asked questions I didn't and I wouldn't know the answers to. I wrote the questions, but I didn't want to take it up with my time, but I'm sure she's going to tell you what the questions were at some point. My concern with the academy idea was that the sixth grade would have no place at East Meadow and they also wouldn't have a place at the high school. They would be entirely segregated for just a year and feel like they really had no place to belong. I asked if there are other academies like this and I was told yes. And I asked where, like in the United States, in Massachusetts? And again, responded yes, but I asked specifically like where are these academies? And I was told that somebody would get back to me on that and I still don't know where any of them are. Someone else in the group that I was in at the focus group said that there's ninth grade academies, but I just responded that I was specifically interested obviously in a sixth grade academy. So at that time, then it was stated that the academy idea might not work out and they might go back to a middle school model. So personally, I was more confused when I left the focus group than when I got there. You know, I just felt like, I didn't even know why I went there. It was kind of a waste of my time, to be honest. So I also went again that night. The superintendent was not there, the principal, Mr. Latell was running it. This meeting had a little bit more information than the first meeting. What was of most interest to me and one of the other parents that attended was the fact that the principal stated how under-equipped they are to handle the sixth grade here. He boasted about how wonderful the high school support would be for the sixth grade. He said that the sixth graders are sexting and that they need counselors that they just don't have here in the building. So he was basically selling the idea that sixth grade doesn't even belong in this building and should be moved over there. So, you know, just letting you guys know, I hope that that's brought to somebody's attention and that even if sixth grade doesn't move until next year, that something hopefully is being done about that now. I couldn't attend any of the other meetings because I didn't have children in those age groups, but I spoke with parents that didn't. As the days went on, there were different discussions in these groups. Each group had more details given with each meeting and different sets of parents. If I was on the committee and I had spoke about this when I went to a school council meeting, I would want to know every inch of this building.
Three minutes, time's up.
Did you, so did you have a lot more?
Not too much more. It was just about the school council meeting that I went to. It's not too much longer. I can try to sum it up a little bit if I have to.
If we could keep it in less than a minute, probably.
Yeah, I'll certainly try. Can I just find where I was? I was saying, okay, if I was on the committee, I would like to see why every inch of the building is filled. I'm in here once a week volunteering in my daughter's classroom and this building is not full. I walk through, there's empty rooms, there's lights turned off. I wish the school committee would walk through the building randomly on their, you know, on your own time if you can or take a tour with somebody at random times and you'll see all of the empty space in this building. I went to the school council meeting and I specifically asked if the town votes any budget stuff down for this change, what would happen? And I was told that money is in reserves and that that money would be used. I don't know where you find how much money is in your reserves, but that's also a concern of mine. Because if there's money in reserves to move sixth grade over, then I'm wondering is there money in reserves and how much money is in reserves if we need to build playground structures and things like that.
And you said the school council told you this?
Yes, I went to the school council meeting and that's what I was told when I asked that question.
Which school council meeting? Was it the one here at East Meadow or the one that?
It was the one here, yes, at East Meadow.
Okay.
Okay. And thank you for.
Thank you very much.
All right. And JR?
All right, JR, a little bit. So I missed the last couple and I just want to talk about, you know, we started this, you guys started this, what, five months ago? Okay. We went from two classrooms and now apparently we need three. Okay, right? Is that, that's a fact? I read through everything, four hundred pages of the architects who built this, the people that excavated it. Okay, I know personally, friends, okay? And this is right from the architect here. We were saying that you need three classrooms per grade, right? For pre-K to sixth grade, you need three classrooms, right? That's, we can agree on that? You have that here, right from the architect. You have two classrooms for pre-K and you have three classrooms for grades K through six. It's right here. The architect who built the building. You all can read it? You all got it, okay? And it says, "By shuffling general classroom space as well as split classrooms, the district would have the flexibility to offer three classrooms per grade, K through six, as well as two pre-K classrooms. In the unlikely event that those spaces are required, as stated in the schematic design submission, if there's continued growth in the district and additional spaces are needed beyond what is outlined here, the district has the opportunity to expand to the east of the new addition." Okay? So your architect who built this thirty-seven million dollar building gave you space for three classrooms. So I'm not saying, I think that maybe the model that the superintendent and the principal have here can be changed, can be shuffled around. I notice things, right? I know it stinks to have to move classes, but not every grade in this school needs three classrooms either. So I still don't know after five months why we're having this conversation to where you need three classrooms per grade. You have it right here, okay? Am I wrong? I mean, I don't know. I mean, this is out of the person who built this building who's saying this, who you paid an exorbitant amount of, you know, money to. And then back, they also said, you know, that in the proximity of the junior high school, they can move, you know, that stuff over there. That was done in December two thousand fifteen. So that was always the plan in December two thousand fifteen. If this gets too filled up, we're going to move the sixth grade. Says it right here, black and white, in their four hundred pages. So back then, this was going to be the option. And lastly, you know, I YouTube'd the meeting last, two weeks ago that I couldn't get to. And I see, I was blown away when Adam talked about one point eight million dollars for a playground. I don't know where he got that number from. There's no way in the world an architect told you one point eight million for a playground. There's no way the general contractor Fontaine Brothers told you one point eight million or Marion and Brothers Construction, who did it here, told you one point eight million for a playground. It's impossible, one hundred and ten percent impossible. You know why it's impossible? Because when you built this school here at East Meadow, the excavation for the entire school was two point one million dollars. Okay? The entire excavation was two point one million. I know that for a fact. So how can a playground one hundred and fifty feet squared be one point eight million dollars? So really, in all actuality, just the excavation work, your excavation work to come in here and put an access road. Now, maybe you don't know what an access road is. I'm not sure, Emery, you do, but it's dirt and gravel. Chain link fencing that goes around it, okay? To build that would take them no time and your bill just for the excavation would be fifty thousand. That's the highest, fifty thousand. I know that for a fact, okay? So I don't know why we're still sitting here and, you know, he's saying one point eight million. Like who gave him that number? Maybe he misconstrued it with something else. But to tell a school committee and to tell us one point eight million dollars from an architect told you that is blatant and I think that, you know.
That's not, that's out of order.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I'm not saying that he did it on purpose. I'm just saying maybe he misconstrued the number of one point eight million dollars.
Misunderstanding happens and we address it that way. Is there anything else, JR, that you want to share?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Audrey?
Audrey, she asked for the East Meadow link. I actually admire the comment of Emery. I really like how you're really trying to encourage them. You want to be a part of this process. I think that's really great. All of the lines like was said too, I think it would be cool for you guys to pop in during the school day. I know my school, school committee members randomly show up for the day and they are toured through the building either by themselves or whatever else and for you guys to really see how the building is being utilized while it's in session. I know you all have full-time jobs and this is, you know, something on the side that it might be good to see. But I agree with you. It'd be nice to be a participatory part of this project of knowing what is going on and not just be presented something, but being involved in the process. So I encourage you and I think it's great.
Thank you.
I'll take it. All right. So thank you all for. No, just, just, okay. And she said she didn't want to speak.
I do want to say, walking around the school and seeing empty classrooms, are those classes in the art gym, library, music? The lights would be off. Teachers use the copy room, teachers lounge to make copies. Meet with other teachers, prep work. That would be why classrooms are empty and dark. Because I'm in this school every day. Every classroom is used. That's all.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to Marcus, who was listed as absent on the minutes from the last one.
Okay. The boys and girls basketball is currently going on. Wrestling as well is going on. Session two of the esports team is also still going on and the kids seem really excited and happy to like have that option and to go to that after school. The reason I wasn't here last time, the class of twenty twenty-three is doing a fundraiser at the home basketball games for both boys and girls and we're selling beanbag toss fifty-fifty. So at halftime for the varsity games, we, the people buy their beanbags and then at the halftime for varsity, they throw them and whoever gets closest to the center of the court gets fifty percent of what we've made that night. There's a spirit week coming up from February tenth to fourteenth and there's a pep rally on the fourteenth as well. Third quarter started Tuesday, January twenty-eighth. Theater performance is going, is starting production and I believe that's with Mr. Sergeant, yes? The second map testing is scheduled for the high school, February third through fifth. Cotillion for ninth through twelfth graders was January eleventh and there's a Valentine's Day dance coming up for seventh to ninth graders, February fourteenth.
Okay. Does anybody have anything they want to ask? I do, but it's not to Marcus. It's actually to Cheryl. Just want to put it out there. My son came home with some chart and I'm going to show it just how stupid it is. I don't know how to read it. And I'm wondering if other people have the same issue and if maybe just putting a how-to somewhere on the webpage so that people understand what it is they're reading. I looked at it and said, I think this is good, but I'm not sure. So, cool. Thank you for reminding me.
It's going pretty well.
Yeah, you guys are killing it, right?
Yeah.
It's good. Thanks for doing that.
Has anybody donated their fifty to the cause?
Their fifty? Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
Mr. Current says give us some money back.
Awesome.
He's won twice now.
All right. So we'll move into new business. First item is half-days.
So back again to our request for half-days for the end of the year for final exams. So it's the three days prior to the last day of school. They've been approved the last two years. We're looking at the union for next year, so it's in the school calendar.
I'm just going to ask that.
But there's really no change what we've done the last two years. It just wasn't on the approved calendar for nineteen twenty.
Remind me, is East Meadow on half-days, those days as well?
Those days, no. I don't believe so. It's just the last day of school day of half-day.
Okay.
But they have the other parent-teacher conferences in spring that we don't have.
And this was related to the testing that they were doing?
Final exams.
Yeah, okay. All right. So do I have a vote on that? I think we need a vote, is what the agenda says.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
No second.
All right, any further? So do we need to discuss anything more or anybody have anything they want to ask?
It doesn't add anything to the buffing or anything, right?
No.
It's a, no, it's a.
It's a wash, right? Because it's, yeah. That's what I thought I remembered from last time, but I figured I might as well ask.
Right. So all those for?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay.
And just so you know, the twenty twenty-one school year calendar will be on the agenda for the eleventh. So we've worked with the union, the school year calendar will be presenting on February eleventh.
So is the, is the last day of school, it got adjusted, right? Because we did have two days at the high school that were not, so I.
So we're February, oh, February. It's difficult thinking. June sixteenth.
So, but East Meadow?
It's June fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Yeah. So we have the water main break.
Right, right.
We have that extra day. So we're June sixteenth, they're June fifteenth.
Okay. That's going to be awesome.
Seven, eighth grade, part of that?
Yes.
Dismissal?
Yes.
They have final exams also?
They do final exams or projects or presentations. We do step-up ceremonies, recognition ceremonies during those weeks. During those days.
All right. The next item is, I think it's a district improvement plan, according to Emery, when he filled me in. Filled me in earlier.
So last week or last meeting, I had put in the folder the addition of the dates that the committee had asked for and so it's open for discussion and a vote for approval because we haven't voted it yet.
Do you need that vote today?
I think that's why she's asking.
I would like the vote today, but.
Okay. Honestly, whatever is not in the folder, I just, I did not look at what we added because it was already two separate pieces and there was a need to really align them. If it's not urgent to do it today, I'd rather do it next time.
I actually can't even find it. I wasn't sure what DIP vote was, so I was looking for something, but is it?
So in last week's January sixteenth, it was the timeline for district improvement.
Okay.
And it's a new, it's the chart that pulled the district improvement goal with the aligned action step and then with the actual dates that we would be conducting portions of each of the goals.
This is the part where it's you and your leadership team?
Mm-hmm.
And then the district itself has nothing to do with the school committee, is I think?
Correct.
I think we need to try to kind of put something like this together for ourselves at some point.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Do you still need additional time or?
So my understanding is that Emery would like it into the document.
Right.
Which means it's going to be really small.
So even if they are separate, if there's a way to create a legend so that we know that this connects to that. And I think one more conversation that we had was around strategic plan, how this links to some of those things.
Yep. So in the big document, there's the strategic plan objectives and then the district improvement plan objectives. Or there's that column, there's the column that has both how it's aligned to the strategic plan and how it's aligned to the district improvement plan. So. It's a little challenging in how you were thinking about it, but because the district improvement plan goals are a little different than the strategic plan objectives. But that's where we tried to align the objectives and the strategic plan to the district improvement goals.
Right. So just to save on space, since we only have so many items or so many goals in the strategic plan, maybe that can be turned into a legend, a color dot or something and then, yeah.
We like colors. Colors are fun.
All right. So we're going to table this until the next meeting, this vote?
Mm-hmm. So is, can we, since we're, our next meeting is the fourth?
The eleventh.
How did I, I know we talked about it, but I don't know how I messed up my calendar.
I have both on my calendar, so.
I know we talked about it and most people did have both and I thought we all selected not next week, but the following.
Okay, so the eleventh and the twenty-fifth, yes? Okay. And the eleventh as a presentation, yes?
Yes. I'm looking at you because while we're talking calendar, the presentation to the town community regarding the Student Opportunity Act, I have reached out to Tracy and she has available February eighteenth, which I know is school vacation, but it is the Tuesday. I'd like to offer that as the date that Tracy comes out. She's gotten pretty busy with MASC work and her work at the Worcester Public Schools. She is on their school committee. So her nights have gotten a little less free than they used to be. So the eighteenth, she's available. I don't know if folks here are available on the eighteenth.
So that was something that wasn't really a school committee meeting.
No, it's not.
It was something we were going to put on for the town and that being said, it would be nice if we had people from the school committee representing.
Do we need quorum or is it just a?
No, you actually wouldn't have quorum. You would just be attending.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be a meeting per se, it would just be an event?
An event. I'm questionable for that night because it is vacation, but.
Which night is that?
Huh?
Which night?
The Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Oh, Lions? It might be something that they would be interested in. It's really interesting.
I just think that this was something that we had talked about being important and we wanted to get her out here to talk to the people that were going to rest on understanding how the budget works and.
And also to invite the select board, the finance committee. It's really important that they understand the projections that are coming out of the Student Opportunity Act. The idea that Student Opportunity Act might give some relief to municipalities with regards to budget. And I don't think towns like Granby are going to see the relief that they were hoping and so there has to be some strategic planning for that.
Okay. So do you need a vote from us to approve that?
No, I just wanted to sort of gather who would be available.
I'm a definite maybe.
You're a definite maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would make myself available.
I'm sure that we could also G cam it so that people could watch it after. Probably six.
I'm not going out of town, at least.
Okay. So I will confirm that with her and invite the select board, finance committee and Chris, let him know.
And Cheryl, did you say where?
I haven't decided yet, so.
What time?
Haven't decided yet, but typically six-ish, so.
And then as soon as we firm that up?
Fourth?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, February eighteenth.
Then as soon as we firm up the date, we can start letting people know that it's official.
Yeah, I want to confirm with Tracy her time and then we can advertise.
All right.
Just for everybody's, she did this presentation at the joint committee, MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees in the joint meeting with Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents to a packed room of about three hundred people. It's very in-depth. It goes into the history of funding of schools in Massachusetts, the legislative requirements, the constitutional requirements and where we are currently and then some projections of what it means for us moving forward. Like I said, we're not going to see relief per se, but Senator Lesser already has a bill to consider. Like I said, we're not gonna see relief per se, but Senator Lesser already has a bill to consider. How the foundation formula affects small communities and rural communities. And whether it's fair, how the formula is adjusted for the many components that go into making foundation formula. So, but she gets into a little bit of that, and it really is important that we understand it so that when we advocate to legislature, to our legislators. Who are then, you know, at the state building, that they have an understanding of what we're up against.
You know, it's funny that that was almost the same thing, you know, put somebody else in Cheryl's place. Eight years ago. We were supposedly in the right direction.
Yep.
The formula changes after a couple of decades, and then now we're saying the same thing, we have to go back. And who knows when they're gonna be changing something. That shows the quality of the work, in my mind. If, if they did not know that there are towns like Granby and we're not the only one that weren't gonna benefit from the changes. The way some other school districts did, or will. That's unfortunate that, you know, it didn't come up at that time. This is, this is waste of time and rework, they have to go back and go through the same old debates. So, I wish we could have our elected officials to share our, you know, our thoughts with them in person. Or we can go to them too, whenever, in April or sometime, yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, these increases from the student opportunity have happened over a seven-year plan. I, that was the fund our future that I kept preaching to everybody about and got involved in. And it is over seven years that things have been increased.
Right.
So it's gonna take a while for.
Well, of course, the other, you know, I don't know if this is what we're discussing, but the other mind-boggling part of it is that. There is this great fanfare that we are increasing what some school districts are getting. But it seems like what the state is doing, the state is telling towns to increase how much they're spending on their education. Instead of the state saying, here's how we're going to come up with these additional funds because it's important to us. Because at the end of the day, we pay taxes too. Some other folks are paying taxes. Instead of us getting some benefit from that, and, you know, if they wanna increase the tax, that's fine. They don't wanna do that either, but they wanna ask a town like Granby to increase, you know, the amount of money that they're gonna be spending on, on education. Good, I wish our town would say it on its own, that's fine. But when the state tells the towns to do that, especially in the, you know, in the disguise of some great legislation that passed. It doesn't make any sense to me, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm kinda, I'm, I'm really, no, again, if this wasn't a conversation that I heard eight-plus years ago when I first sat here. And same conversation now, I would've said, you know what, we'll just, we'll battle it. I don't have time to battle it, and they're gonna go and do the same stuff over again, apparently, and it, you know, again, it doesn't make any sense. I know I'm preaching to the choir.
I'll, I'll leave it at that.
All right, anything else on that, before we move on to? Policy?
So we have the second read on the policies that were in last meeting's folder. I apologize, I will move them over in the future. They are in regards to our tiered focused review work. And towards our policies around foster care.
And these are items that were found that we needed to include when.
Yes, we were out of compliance.
That review, and they were, they were not in there because MASC didn't have them?
Correct.
And we didn't, okay.
Yep.
I remember that now. And then, and then when they're, when you put these in there, they're in line with what MASC has, correct? I honestly believe MASC, like you mentioned, that MASC actually had one that was not correct.
It is, so these are policies that were drafted by the consortium of special ed supervisors and directors in our area. Working with special education attorneys.
Okay. So, we ready to vote on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the, are these amended or brand new? These are all, are they all brand new? There's one that says amended.
Uh, one is amended, the discrimination statement. Policy needs to be added to current policy, and then there is new policy for foster care.
Can you, can, okay, so, uh, help me out this way, so I'll make the motions. Which ones are we voting for, this is one question. The other one is which ones are new and which one is the amended one?
Okay. Go back.
And I'll make the motions separate, so we'll vote them all separate.
I don't know where they went.
There was another folder inside that.
Oh, it's in, it's in policy.
It says policy.
Sorry.
Which one is it?
It's in January sixteen, it says policy. Yeah, if you click on that, it's policy.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, apologies, thank you. The policies that need disclaimers are amendments. So, student attendance, GE, I'm sorry, JE, JF, school admissions. And JFR, student enrollments, all just need a disclaimer added. And that disclaimer reads, "The proof of residency requirement does not apply to students and families covered under ESA guidelines for students who are homeless and students in foster care. The family should contact Carol Hepworth, Director of People's Services, who will work with you to enroll these students. She can be reached at chepworth@grambyschoolsma.net or 413-467-9237." So those are all amended policies.
Okay.
And the new policy is educational opportunities for children in foster care, JFABF.
Okay.
Two more? One or four amendments, one or four?
Oh, I will do two, two motions, I guess. Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the policies JE, JF, and JFR amended with the new disclaimer.
Second.
Any, um, anything else we need to discuss on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the new policy, JFABF on, at opportu, what is it?
Educational opportunities for children in foster care.
Educational opportunities for children in foster care.
Have a second?
No, second.
Okay, anything I'm aware to discuss on this? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Then we move on to the old business. Is there an update on the East Meadow? Now, update? Okay. And that's only there simply because last time we thought it wise to just put something out there on the agendas in case you had an update you wanted to share with us.
Okay. Um, then at this point, do you want to answer a question? What is the format of our conversation on the eleventh? How, what, how are we gonna do that since we don't have any meetings till then? Do you know?
My thought, so there were, continued to be questions about each of the. Solutions? Potential solution, options, thank you. I don't know why that word left me. So, my intent would be to introduce what we've been doing to date. Give the committee the information that they had requested in both the do-nothing and the information they requested for. Cost of the playground for the preschool move potentially. And then present the work of the district leadership team, the feedback from the focus groups. And really work that into the design of a transition from grade six to the Granby Junior/Senior High School. And then, open conversation.
Okay, so that's basically a presentation of what, what has been done until that point?
Right.
And will you have an opportunity to work into your presentation? Any question that you may have received from the committee?
So, you know, you see me writing furiously, that's what I'm taking. I'm taking notes to see, you know, have we answered the, the community's questions? Are there other things that we haven't considered? So, I try to every time we have a meeting or a focus group to take those notes and bring it back to the team and have the discussion. Have we considered this? You know, where does this fit into how we're working through for a solution?
And ju, and just, and just one more quick thing, just so that there's no note issues later. I think if we get anything with regards to what things cost and we do get a quote from somebody, maybe we specify where that quote came from.
Mm-hmm.
And make sure it's in, in the literature. That way there, there's, there's no.
I did.
Easy.
I just, I didn't recall it, I just wanna make sure that that's out there where.
Can we include the, the actual quote for?
Uh, it was an email, but sure.
We do, so, so what we presented in two weeks ago was basically, um, a sort of a pullout from the. Cost analysis of the playground.
Mm-hmm.
What we need to do is then take that and mold it into what a playground would look like. That is, has the square footage that we would need for two preschool classrooms, students who are mobility-challenged. That has the same basic footprint and criteria that they currently have. And really use what, what was costed in the East Meadow construction, and then what would that truly cost here? So, we didn't go through yet and pick out all of the pieces of that cost for the entire East Meadow. And that's our work between now and the presentation. I mean, we estimated two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, at the first go-around because of feedback that we had gotten from other districts that built similar playgrounds. And then, when we looked at, you know, the, the cost of the playground here, it looked to be about the same, but we haven't really gone in and said, okay. This is what it costs to excavate, this is what it costs to have fencing, this is what it costs to have, you know, the, the track that the kids ride on and, and all of the equipment and all of that.
And then, is there, I can't remember where we left on, so I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult, but do we, are we having a price for a sixth-grade playground over there? Because, I mean, right now, the sixth graders do have access to the playgrounds here, right?
Right.
So, is, I mean, if we're doing that, there would be?
Yeah, we haven't considered a formal playground because there is so much field space.
Right.
And there is the track. There also is the potential for students to walk a trail that the, I can never remember the program where they came in and planted the trees. It wasn't neighbors helping neighbors.
The fruit tree?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, um.
That's awful. But there's a path that we could build that students could walk, be more like a nature trail.
Right.
Type of thing.
But they wouldn't have any, we're not, look, I, I, I don't know.
I think I know what you're saying, and again, those are the kinds of questions I think that we would be building into the presentation.
Okay.
I, I just.
It's a help yourself.
Help yourself, thank you.
Now, again, just, just back to what I was really asking for, it's just like whenever we, for numbers, that we can just kind of make sure that that, and probably was, I do remember seeing something in there. I just wanna make sure that it's all out there because I, I just, I mean, we're just gonna pass this information as we get it, right? You went out and this is what they quoted you, and this is who quoted it to you. It's not, it's not us making, you know, making numbers up, right?
Right.
And to be honest with you, I was just as floored as everybody else when I, when I saw the cost of the playground, you know, on your, on your thing, so. And I think we did ask you where you got, you know, these.
I'm gonna forward it to you right now, it's from the architect themselves. It looks like it's something right out of their program, their accounting program. But I'll forward it to you and you can share with the rest of the committee.
Okay.
I think it's sort of really difficult to even consider any playground at all, and we don't have that kind of money. With other needs, you can consider a playground anywhere. We don't have that kind of money, I don't think. I don't think the town's in the most support either. I think we have other needs before that, but as much as I love playgrounds and kids love them, but I don't, I don't think we can talk about a playground. But, I don't care, it's fifty thousand dollars, we just don't have that.
Cheryl, do you know if there is?
Do I know?
If MSBA has requirements for playgrounds for?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, square footage, you know, types of materials, yep. Space for numbers of students in the program, kinds of students in the program.
Is there a link that we could, that you could send me where that, where you have that? I'm sure you sent it before, but if you could just refresh it to me, that would be great.
Again, I didn't, I didn't really wanna get into the, you know.
And it's tricky because a lot of this talks about, sort of like, at-home daycare. So, trying to make sure that if children are in home daycares, that there's appropriate outside play. But then it also falls into school-based.
I'm just talking about, I'd like to see what the requirements are for like the middle school, you know, moving to sixth graders, like what?
Sorry, yeah, I misunderstood.
Because here, we have pre-k, you know, like we say, I don't, I don't wanna beat a dead horse or anything, but I'm, you know, just to see what, what we're up against. Because if we're, I wanna make sure that if we have to make this move, that we're following the rules on the other side.
Yep.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
And again, I just use that as an example, but to me, it's just as important if we were to try to rip up that ramp, like somebody suggests it, what would the cost be and where do we get that cost? It's not just something that we, it's not just a number on a piece of paper. It's something that somebody gave us and who that person or group is. Just so everybody knows where our source is.
Again, because our next meeting, we're gonna be talking, and I already sent you.
Yep.
A lot of stuff. Do we know how, whether, whether and how grandfathering rules work for some of these? For instance, if GHS exists and we need, we want to do certain things. I know that we can't do renovations beyond a certain point because it triggers a lot of, a lot of other costs. But if outside, you know, you add certain things, are they all subject to the new requirements? Or is there anything that is grandfathered?
I would have to confirm.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't find anything.
Does a playground add to the value of the building for this idea that if we invest a certain amount of money in Granby Junior/Senior High School? Then we have to bring the building up to current code?
Right.
And does an outside playground constitute?
That was what we would run into when, there was previous discussions, right, with West Street and with the former East Meadow. That, what, whatever that amount, threshold was. So, and I'm not entirely clear on how that works for.
That threshold is a, is a certain percentage of the building's value.
So, is that the assessed tax value?
It is the assessed value, and, yeah.
There's a couple of, there's a couple of that, and then the ADA requirement too. There's another one that we'd have to.
So, this is me being naive, but we've been doing work in the high school for the boilers and we, the water main break and stuff. Is it a totality kind of thing? So like we have, I'm just playing with numbers because I don't understand. So, we spent thirty thousand on the boilers and then, you know, fifty-seven hundred for the water main break. And I, I don't know, whatever it is for the, stuff for the roof. So, does all of that total up and then you meet your threshold, or is it at one expenditure time?
So, those type of things would be repairs and maintenance?
Right, well, so, but that's what I thought, I guess, I don't, I don't know if I can even take it offline to ask because I don't wanna be in violation of open meeting, but.
You can have a conversation with.
Okay, because what I'm concerned about is we just spent the one point, whatever, for the roof. And that's a big chunk of money, and so how does that work? Like, I don't wanna get us into a position where all of a sudden we have to go to the town and ask for money because we've been doing these repairs? And that's just me being, I've tried to research it, but honestly, I feel like I'm, it's being read to me in Latin and Greek and stuff, and I. So I, I'm concerned that, you know, we've been doing these things, which is great, but I don't wanna do something else and additional. And we've talked about, you know, even with moving the sixth grade, there's gonna be probably new furniture and perhaps different things like that. So, how does that all, how does it work?
Yep, yep, good questions.
Um, is there anything else? Because we're gonna try to break up into the subcommittees.
Okay.
So, we do have executive session. So I know typically we come back to open session. Is that something that the committee still wants to do and then go into executive session?
Um, we, we can ask, because typically, when we come back, it's really just a quick report so that it relieves the, the report on the next meeting. But if you guys feel like we. But if you guys feel like we just want to go from here into executive session.
But if we go into executive session, we can't, we don't want to, we can't come back to open and everything in the work group is open. So if we close the meeting to go executive session, then we can't do that, right?
We can, we just, no, we can, we just, we, your executive, as you enter your executive session, you say that we will return to open session.
Oh, you just changed the words?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we come back and continue.
We can come back, do our mini reports, and then go to executive session.
To me, that would be easiest.
I think that makes the most sense.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
So I think it says here 6:45 to 7:30. We're obviously not gonna make that time slot, so I'm thinking from now till eight o'clock, and we come back for a quick five-minute recap, a 15-minute recap, and then we break into executive session. Does that sound fair?
Is, are we gonna have enough time with just a half hour? Because we had 45 minutes. Not that I'm begging to stay longer, but I don't know if that is enough time for...
I can say that executive session is very short.
Okay.
And I do think that you probably have some updates that you need to get through with the budget subcommittee.
I mean, a half hour's fine, but 45 minutes works, so it's...
And then on the community outreach?
I'm totally fine for the record with the half hour. I just want to make sure that we're not shortchanging the work groups.
The community outreach, I think one of the things that we can make sure we discuss is how we want to reach out to the town and let them know about this. I mean, this is a classic example of the outreach we're gonna need to first, Stacy.
Tracy.
Tracy.
Okay, yeah, her name.
Is Miss...
See if, see if the avenues of communication are gonna be enough, and if not, what more we might want to add.
Okay.
That's just my thought. Right? So I guess we'll be back in half an hour?
We're not going anywhere, right?
Sounds good.
So now that brings us, we just came back from our breakout sessions. We're gonna move into scheduling reports. Do you have a superintendent report tonight? Nope, okay. Business?
Um, to be honest, we didn't get much done. We did a lot of discussing, but I don't know if you want to, if you had any thoughts that you'd like to share?
I was just getting an understanding of what details the budget.
A little bit of both. If you had, so if you had an official report for this week from the business office?
I suppose.
No, we do that in the next one.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Okay, so then, so then that's good.
I thought we were reporting out, sorry.
Yeah.
That's what I thought we would have gone back to.
Well, it's, it's gonna be, the next question is off to you, because then we can go back to Jen, if you want to talk about the yes tonight, or you want to wait until next week?
I can wait till next week.
Okay, so then we'll just go from you and into your subcommittee, and then I think that'll be it. We'll go into executive session.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just getting an understanding of how the budget works, and we're still determining the budget dates.
So we're gonna know sometime in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna get some, some, some things out to the other boards to see when we can start setting up somebody's...
Yes, and as you guys know, like last year, like a lot of those days were moving targets, so now we have the governor's budget. Really, it's just getting in front of these committees, and the hardest thing is gonna be trying to get everybody at the table at the same time.
Which is, which is why I think it's important to try to float some dates out there now, right? And see what they come back with. Because I think that was a big issue last year, too.
How did we do it last year? Did I, did we provide you with some dates and then you went to them, or did you go to them for some of their dates and came back to us?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask him. Did we go to them first, or did they, like how did, like how did that all work when you set up the...
We just called out and called a joint meeting and invited them over.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the first one last year was at the, at the gym or somewhere. I think it was a gym, in the middle of the gym, or was it the year before?
I think it was last year, the first year was here.
And then we had one at the library, right?
Then we had one at the old library.
So why are you asking me then? I don't remember things anymore, Adam.
So let me say this, then.
No, no, just we called, we asked, we reached out, sent an email and said, you know, we want to hold a joint meeting to discuss the budget, just to give you the...
And then everybody determines where.
Yeah, then we determine which dates worked out, and you may remember that on one of them, we had to move and move because the finance committee needed some additional information and all that. And then we went at the old library. But it's basically finding a mutually agreeable date and then sitting down together.
Yeah, I think it's best if the school takes the initiative first, so we don't get the question of the school has been given us something.
Right.
Yeah.
So, right, the first thing, Adam and I will go over and meet with Chris to share with him the governor's budget at this point, to get his thoughts around where the town is shaping up. We go back, we've already been meeting with the departments at the school level, and then the principals at the district level plus any leadership. So we already have everybody's numbers. Now it's just a matter of how close are we really to this initial budget that came out from the governor. So we share that, those thoughts, and then we work with Chris to figure out what the dates are that looks like it would be convenient, because he has the big calendar in his office, and he can let us know. They're meeting these days, so, you know, why don't we shoot for these weeks, and then we go from there.
So is that something that you guys would...
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
Yep.
And we can kind of expect to hear back about some potential dates in the next three weeks or so?
Yeah, so my goal is to meet with Chris next week early, and the timeline has us setting up those meetings in mid-February, so...
That's kind of what I thought, is like, be the middle of this month, so by the end of next month, we should have a solid idea of when we're gonna meet, or if we haven't met already.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I think the government's budget, even though it's the first iteration of the budget, is important because if I'm not recalling our conversations with the finance committee, if I am recalling it correctly, last year's, what they had said is that they would just go ahead and consider the government, the governor's budget as their basis and make their calculations that way. I think at the end of the year, there was a change about $50,000 or more, whatever it was, that was added to the budget, and we did not get there, right?
Yes, so they made their threshold based on the final cherry sheet or the second to last, the senate cherry sheet is what they call it, right?
So it wasn't the governor's budget?
It wasn't the governor's budget.
Okay, good, good to know.
But you were, yes, you were, you were right. But yes, I want to put this the right way. They don't have the authority to tell us that that's the amount that we stay at.
Yeah, I think we also discussed that.
I just wanted to remind you that as well, yes, yes. But yes, they said whatever the senate number on the cherry sheet was, that was what they were going to hold us to, for lack of a better term.
For planning purposes, I think that's what it was.
And the way it come usually historically, once the budget goes through the senate, there is a bump in the chapter 70, the budget for the year, so.
So I think the important thing, though, based on those discussions, because I'm starting to remember some of this now, was that we stay consistent with our methodology. If they can stay consistent with theirs if they want, or they can move to ours, but as long as we were consistent with what we did, and we could show where we came up with our numbers, as to why we base it this way, everybody was kind of in agreement that it wasn't a bad thing.
Yep.
Okay.
And one last thing. I don't know what your availability is. I still would like to do a series of GCAM videos, or any which way that, you know, we all collectively think will benefit the conversation with the town. Because, you know, we're hearing that, you know, the example that you shared earlier. There are numbers in everyone's minds, or there are some concepts in everyone's minds. If we don't do our job and just get in front of it and say, this is what we have, this is how the process works, then, you know, we're not doing our due diligence to make sure that everybody knows what it really is. So I would like to do some of that, but I can't do it on my own. I need information, so I'll reach out to you.
Yeah, love to.
And if you want to be part of it, you can...
No, I mean, to be honest with you, that's one of the reasons I think we tried to move into this whole type of a structure and this whole thing, and we were trying to plan our year better so that we can advocate better, right? I mean, I think that was all part of the, part of the equation.
Right.
Right, so from the community outreach subcommittee, do you guys talk about anything neat?
Jen, are you done or no?
No, we had...
I'm sorry, were you done? Trying to move it along.
Yeah, so before we, before we left for... Before we left for the, thanks.
Oh, sorry.
That was out loud. That was your outside voice. That was your outside voice.
As we were leaving for the subcommittee meetings, Mike was asking whether or not we could just come up with a framework to communicate with everyone, the February 18th meeting, where Tracy Novak is gonna come and, you know, talk about the new Student Opportunity Act and how it impacts, impacts towns, what the changes are, and what the future potential work is gonna be on that. So for that reason, we, we looked at potential categories, and we came up with three. We said we need to reach out to the public, which is primarily our community, our town committees, and then our officials, primarily elected officials. So let me just go through what we have under public. We're gonna put notices or information about that meeting on our website, which will also be available on the app. We're gonna do an all-town, all-call. We're gonna use GCAM to share information through their board. We're gonna reach out to newspapers, Gazette, Republican, Mass Live, Sentinel. We're gonna post it on both of our school and school committee Facebook pages. We're gonna post it at the public library here in Granby, and then we're gonna reach out to businesses to see if they can post some flyers or they can distribute some flyers. With the town committees, we're gonna, probably you and Cheryl will be sending letters to finance committee and select board, and then we'll reach out to department leaders of council on aging, Granby Police Department, and Granby Fire Department. And finally, we thought that it would be a good idea, since Cheryl mentioned that last time that topic was discussed and Tracy was presenting, 300-plus people showed up. We thought maybe it's a good idea to reach out to our officials as well, so I don't know if, again, the two of you probably would be reaching out to our two state representatives, the state senator. We're gonna reach out to the surrounding school committees, and then we're gonna reach out to superintendents from the surrounding school districts.
Okay. And I think, I think the, to be honest with you, I think what the important thing here is, is that we write down everything we've done and how we've done it so that we can recreate this easily the next time we want to do an event like this.
Yeah. Are you talking about what we came up with?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a picture, but we have a lot of pictures, so we should, we can tabulate that and then we can...
Yeah, and then as we, you know, and then as we go through the steps to do all that, we make sure that we have that documented, create like a playbook so that next time we can just...
That's a great idea, yeah.
Because I'm really hoping that we can do these types of things a little bit more frequently, and then, I mean, if we can target and find out that we're doing things correctly to get the people that we're looking for in here, then great. If not, we tweak that a little bit, right? Figure out what may have...
I think, honestly, I think the framework is there, but it depends upon the topic, how much topic and timing is gonna really determine. I think we're reaching out, we've got the framework, we've been doing that, we've been having success doing almost the same thing, but topic of what the meeting is, time of year, like we already know going into it, if we, it is vacation week, so some of our public people, school commi-, not school committee, that's what we are, those other people that go to the school, the district people might be away or not, you know, just not thinking of school stuff. So I think we're getting a pretty good framework. We've been reaching out, using the same, same sort of thing, right, for each of these things. We've been having good luck with it, so it's just a matter of...
Yeah, but I like, I like the idea of the extra things, too, and if we know, if we know that they're effective, like reaching out to the businesses and seeing if we can put, post, post things up there. Just little things like that, so we're not sitting here a year from now or eight months from now saying, what did we do last time? Who did we reach out to? Who yelled at us when we walked in a door? Who said, oh, sure, no problem, just put it up on the board? Just little things like that.
I think in terms of communication, we always say that, you know, it's a two-way thing, right? So all these things that we're talking about are one-way, we're sending. So, you know, when you guys come in and just, you know, tell us what you think, we'll listen, but we have to find different ways of getting that type of input. Otherwise, we don't know what type of information was shared, you know, your example, for instance, was helpful, because now we know that there are different points of information sharing, and the information is not always accurate. So that helps us find better ways, but unless we hear, we don't know what it is. And we can't just rely on these one-off meetings because we're only meeting twice a month. How do we make that a continuing input for us that would be, that will be good for us to figure out? I don't know what it is. I don't think anyone of us does, but...
And I'm just wondering if, on things like this, I mean, this just kind of came to me, if there's any things that we're gonna hand out when people come in, maybe we have somebody at the table handing it out and saying, hey, how'd you hear about this? And just kind of make notes as to, like, what, 80% of the people said they heard it from this one source. Okay, so that's how we focus going forward, right? Versus not really knowing and just throwing mud up against the wall every time, trying to figure out what works and what doesn't. Just a quick, hey, how'd you hear about it?
Just a question. Who's gonna get all this stuff out? Because you're basically only talking two weeks away. Who's getting, who's doing this brochure, and who's getting it out to people? Who's doing all that work?
Yep, so I'm confirming, I had Tracy hold the date, so I'll confirm with her tomorrow. Right, and then space, I'll have to confirm with the principals where, and then I would anticipate doing the flyer tomorrow or the next, well, it's already Friday, so it'll be out by early next week.
Well, it's a good thing. Maybe people can't come, but at least they can say they didn't know about it.
Right.
No, then maybe...
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, yep.
Send it on a turn, I'd rather get it in so it could be in for a couple of weeks.
Yes.
And then if you need me, like if, like I don't know if you're gonna draft something to go to the select board and FinCom, I can, you just let me know when to stop by and I can come in and sign, if you need me to sign it. Or if you need me to actually send it to them or drop it off, I can do, I can do that, too.
Yeah. You're, guys are, no, that's in another couple of weeks, sorry. My timeline's really short right now.
All right. Sorry about that. And so are we ready to go? So this may take a few minutes. So we vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts general law. Chapter 30A, section 21, part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining as doing so in an open session. They have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Is anyone gonna do a roll call?
I'll do the roll call. I can remember everybody's name at 8:15.
Mr. Simpson?
Mr. Simpson?
Mr. Evren?
Aye.
Ms. Bartos?
Aye.
Ms. Mallett?
Aye.
Mr. Petrus?